Under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is citizen concerns. Anyone here to speak on an item not already addressed on the agenda? Also, if anyone was watching live on YouTube, the phone number to call is 712-224-6014. On any item or at the end of the agenda. Hearing none at this time, item two is approval of the agenda. I'll move it. Second by Radek. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All saying nay. Passes four zero. Items three through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of minutes of the April 7th meeting. Item four is approval of the claim. Item five.
What about mine?
Includes A. Approval of resolution thanking and commending Terry Ganzel for years of service to Woodbury County. B. Approval of resolution thanking and commending Lynette Phillips for years of service to Woodbury County. And C. Approval to reappoint Sally Hartley to the Community Action Agency Board of Directors. Item six from Human Resources includes A. Approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. B. Authorization to initiate the hiring process. C. Approval of request to deauthorize county position. D. Approval of retiree requests to remain on the county dental insurance plan. And item seven from Secondary Roads County Engineer Mark Nara includes A. Approval of the permit to work in the right of way for Hunt Farms. B. Approval of the permit to work in the right of way for Heck Drainage. C. Approval of the tile line permit for Schmillin Construction, Dave Phillips. And D. Not B. As it says on the agenda, sorry about that everybody. Approval of the underground utility permit for Northern Natural Gas Company. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All saying nay. Passes four zero. Item eight from the county sheriff is for action, discussion and action to reverse the decision to use COVID-related sick and pay the employee from paid administrative leave.
So, um, we've had a couple situations and it's basically because, uh, first of all, Dave Drew, Sheriff Woodbury. Because of the overabundance of caution that we're using because of COVID. And, uh, one of the issues is we had two employees that had, uh, temperatures. One had a temperature that spiked at a doctor's room. She returned to work, but according to the CDC. He had to remain in the ward for up to 72 hours. In normal conditions, we, that person would come back to work. But because we're worried about, uh, not only our own employees, but the jail population. It was decided that that person would, uh, stay home and return to work for 72 hours. I advised that person that they would, they wanted to come back to work. And I said, no, in normal circumstances, you could come back to work. But this is what I'll do is I'll put you on paid administrative leave. We've done that for other employees for, uh, all types of matters, uh, for discipline. We used it in this circumstance. Isn't, uh, something that sheriffs haven't used, uh, throughout my career. And then while we were having a discussion, uh, we also had another employee that had some, um, breathing issues and, uh, also had a note to come back, but was still taking breathing treatments. And because it wasn't determined, because nobody at that time was doing some testing. We said, no, you can't stay away and, uh, we'll give you, uh, paid administrative leave. And there was no issues with the other one, but with this one, uh, they ended up losing, uh, 68 hours of sick time. And so I'm here to, uh, try to get this thing rectified because, uh, I had met with, uh, Auditor Gill, Melissa, PJ, Joshua, I don't, I don't think you were there. We also have an email. Anyway, this is a vestal report we'll get into in a little bit if we need to. So, the other party was told to remain at home as the other deputy was. So, I guess my concern is, this happened before April 1st when the order came out from, uh,
Department of Labor.
Yeah. Department of Labor. So, what we're trying to do is to have the same precedent for this individual as we did for the other deputy. Going forward at that meeting, we would, we agreed that we would, uh, go by what the Department of Labor has because, my understanding is, you may, from now on, use some sick time, but somehow it comes back. I'll let Melissa explain. So, this happened before that, but we were still trying to be extra cautious on it.
I thought there were two of them in there.
Under the, what I brought here was this thing called the vestal report. To be honest with you, I've used this, uh, it's kind of funny. I, I used it when I started as sheriff, uh, with some, uh, issues with the previous board. And basically what it is resolving courthouse conflicts and it has Attorney General's opinion. And, uh, if you scroll down there, one of the things is, uh, if we get to this. Can supervisors decide personnel policies for other elected officials? And the answer was no. Authority over personnel matters resides with the elected officials unless the statute expressly gives the authority to the board of supervisors. Board of supervisors can establish sick leave and vacation policies for personnel in county offices other than elected officials and the deputies. So, it's my opinion that the sheriff has the autonomy to decide, um, how he's going to pay those people. The board of supervisors are allowed to give the sheriff the budget and the dollars, dollars for his budget and also for his personnel. How I choose to pay or use that is, uh, according to this, under the sheriff's discretion.
On this page, it says right here that supervisors set sick leave policies for all offices.
Except, and you go down farther, it says, if you get a little bit farther, it says except for elected officials.
That would be for you.
The elected officials. I don't get sick time and I don't get vacation. As sheriff, I have the office of sheriff and so I have the responsibility for all the personnel. And how we decide to, uh, pay, some of that is done by contract. But when it comes to sick time and administrative leave, that's the discretion of the sheriff. So what I'm asking is that we could rectify this, uh, issue and give him his 68 hours back. Because, as I said, he wanted to come back and I don't see the reason to penalize somebody that wanted to come back. Yet I told them not to come back. Or one of my administrators told them not to come back in the abundance of caution. Because we don't want to have any issues, not only with our personnel, but I can be very honest with you, our personnel are very important, but also the jail. It becomes a disaster in our jail if we have it up there. And, uh, we don't, we don't want to cross that bridge. But now set forth from that time, we had this meeting, um, these new, uh, things came in with Department of Labor. Unfortunately, we can't use it retroactively, so we have to use the policy or what I have used in the past. I have no problem going forward, uh, if something comes up, but I don't want to penalize my person because of, uh, me telling him to stay home. And I, I believe that's what I, that I would be doing in this situation. So I would just ask that the board would reconsider that and, uh, let him have the administrative leave part.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you've, uh, mentioned a few other situations and employees. This is only about one, correct?
Uh, there was two involved, but you did pay the one. The other one did not get, the other one got charged with sick time.
Without background on that instance, I'm not sure exactly what the case was.
This person had spiked a fever that was unrelated to COVID. And, uh, it was, uh, another medical issue that has happened to him in the past. And, uh, he had a doctor's excuse that said he could come back. But as a staff, we decided that it was probably best, since CDC has a whole different set of rules right now, that we would make him stay home for the 72-hour period. He stayed home for the 72-hour period, had no issues and, uh, and, uh, so then we had him come back to work and I had instructed him to, uh, that he would be paid under paid administrative leave. And this was, uh, while we were having this discussion with, uh, Melissa, Pat and PJ in my office. Now PJ had mentioned to me, uh, in that meeting, that the sheriff would have that discretion. And, uh, so we moved forward and we were somewhat surprised when this happened then to our other employee. So, that's, that's all I'm asking is that we give back him his, his accrued sick time and going forward, uh, from April 1st.
What dates were that, was that for that other case and?
It was, uh, it was prior to April 1st, so I don't, I don't know unfortunately, Matthew, the exact dates.
3/23 through 4/1?
Probably.
If that's what you're talking about here, it says 3/23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 30 and 31 and 4/1.
No, uh, this is the one that's on the request for today, but he was mentioning another one.
Oh, you mean the one that got administrative.
The other one was, uh, three days and, uh, let me look up my calendar.
But that's one that got administrative leave.
He did get administrative leave, that person. Um, so, let's see, we're in April. So this was before April. So I'm going to say that must have been, um, March 25, 26, 27 in there. And so he, uh, he was given, uh, paid without any sick time or anything taken.
What were the circumstances there?
Uh. Can I say what he had? Probably not. He, he had a medical issue, so, yeah, HIPAA, so you got to be careful what you know.
But again, he had a note saying he could come back to work, but you said no.
He did have a note, uh, but it was determined, we talked to, uh, um, I think we had, I think we had some conversation, don't quote me on it, with, uh, Kevin Green, but I, I can't be a hundred percent sure. So, I, I know that we went by what CDC said and CDC recommended, uh, regardless of 72-hour waiting period for no fever to spike. So he had no fever in that 72-hour period and, uh, so then he was allowed to come back. The other person was still doing breathing treatments, um, and it wasn't determined because he didn't have a test to see if he had COVID. But he was having breathing treatments because of some lung issues and we knew that that was one of the things that were going on with COVID. And, uh, it was just decided that he should stay home until all that is completed.
So I've been hearing until now, I guess, that this was the first case like this where it was changed to something you'd prefer to be changed back to administrative leave regarding a sickness. Uh, Melissa, are you aware of this, um, other employee from the 25th?
That I sent the email out changing. I don't know the circumstances behind it. The other one I, was that possibly before past payroll?
I think it was, yeah, they both put a place where it was first. That marched after it.
I only sent the email to change the one.
So you don't know the background for this other example?
Not the exact circumstances.
I think the other one was why we had the meeting.
Okay.
And then the one where the most amount of sick time is, that you must have had a discussion about, so.
I only talked about one in the meeting.
Right.
So I think that's what the confusion is right now.
What happened was if Major Wick brought up, there was another issue. And I think what happened, it might have just got, uh, lost in translation.
What was the issue? Was there a coding for accrued sick leave and it was changed to administrative leave or was it, I mean, what was the question?
Um, there was a debate on if, if administrative leave could be given and, uh, County Attorney Jennings was there and said the sheriff did have that, um, right to do it.
But that was changed to the COVID sick time.
Once we started April 1st, we went to COVID.
Can I, Melissa, will you come up? I just, I don't really want to be in the middle of this. But since my name's brought up and I talked about it, and I've read, read some of the correspondence, I think there's some confusion. First thing is that Doug Phillips was talking about, uh, a change in policy that, that didn't occur. The only thing that we changed was that we put in some different codes. We didn't change the policy as far as, uh, sick, uh, and usage of it. What we did was that put some other codes in there so it should capture that in case the federal government would reimburse us with COVID expenses. And I think that's where Doug Phillips thought that that was, that changing policy is what, from what I was reading. And then also Matthew, some of your correspondence, you said something about being reimbursed by the federal government. Is it still my understanding, is my understanding, I think it's still correct, is we are not going to be reimbursed for COVID, is that correct?
Currently, um, governments.
And Matthew's correspondence, he got the excuses that we would be reimbursed by the federal government. And that is, just trying, all I'm trying to do is to clarify that.
Okay.
That wasn't, there wasn't a change in policy early on as far as the county goes and as far as benefits and that sort of thing. All it was, was a change in, uh, codes in order to capture that amount of time. And then we had a discussion about it and we got that meeting without it being decided. I do think that, uh, as far as what, uh, sheriff moves as administrative leave, uh, and PJ might, might weigh in on that.
I'm just in the end of this. County Attorney Jennings. We talked about a couple of things that day. There was an employee that was off, that was told he was welcome to come back. But the sheriff's department thought that he wasn't fit to come back for their employees. That was the instance where I believe that person had taken sick leave or accrued time. But the sheriff wanted to put him on administrative leave and told that he couldn't. And now there's a new employee that I believe has come up, which I think is the focus of this.
But before we move on to the sheriff, what was the fact?
First employee, what I had discussed was administrative leave, the way we had used it in the past. I didn't believe that that was a closed door. It was just brought up that that's the only way that we had used it. But I, in my opinion, I thought that we could use it for more than just that if we felt it was applicable. However, it was decided that the board still maintains payroll. That was just my opinion that we could probably use it that way. We didn't decide anything as far as I understand it.
So the, the outcome, sorry, of the first employee not on the agenda was?
It was, uh, I think you used administrative leave, you know, it was left, as far as I know.
Yep.
Is that correct? And you thought it was different?
I thought it was different.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to, it was just having to sort through the confusion. Because it wasn't, it wasn't decided that at that point that, uh, they gave you administrative leave.
So, who would know best though? The sheriff who employs his people. And the sheriff who employs his people should have the power to decide if that person can come to work for the safety of the rest of the people or not. And I believe that, under that vestal report and that opinion, gives me the authority to decide. Otherwise, why have an elected sheriff or why have an elected county attorney? Because you should have that discretion to decide for the safety of your employees and the safety of that person. We wear a mask so that we don't get others contaminated or they don't contaminate us. We didn't want to have these issues, so over the abundance of caution, we sent a guy home. And he should not be penalized because I sent the guy home. So, I'll be really honest with you. It's not going to happen in the future, but it needs to be rectified now. Because now the Department of Labor Wage and Hours has addressed that. But to take that 68 hours from him, because I gave him the advice to stay home, is, uh, in my opinion, wrong. And I think you, I think you would see it, uh, the same way as I'm seeing it. As far as I hope you will.
Melissa, can I ask a question too? How many employees in all departments have had to take leave of different kinds since April 1st?
Since April 1st, um, are you talking about the, um, the emergency paid leave? The federally funded, not federally funded, but mandated?
Kind of Corona leave of any type?
Oh, I would say three, I think we've gotten paperwork for three, four actually.
And what happened to any of those?
Two, we had doctor's note, one, we had also, um, notification or proof that they needed the leave and then the other person, we also had a doctor's note, so.
So were they paid?
They will be as of April 1st, yes, of the, out of the emergency paid leave. Everybody else prior to that had used the COVID codes.
Thing that's important for the board to stand is, uh, they, I was supposed to be paid. And it will not count against their accruals.
Right.
Because they're, uh, they have now demanded, the federal government has said, we're going to cover their fees. We're going to pay them, they're going to pay them. We are not being reimbursed for them, but they are being paid and it's not counting against.
That was a faith statement, we'd be reimbursed for it. That was a faith statement.
But we are not going to be reimbursed for them and it's not going to count, like, it's not going to count against their accruals prior to April 1st. Correct?
Prior? No, after April 1st, it's not going to count against their accruals.
Yes, but it's not, yeah.
Prior.
I'm just saying, I said, their accruals, anything they accrue before April 1st will not be reimbursed if they take time off now. Because the federal.
Oh.
Yep. Saying the same thing, just saying it in a circle.
Yeah, we just turned around, that's exactly right.
So.
A two-week period, doesn't go on forever, so, yeah.
Now, this is because it's before April 1st? Is there any other employee in any department before April 1st?
Yes.
And are they paid?
They had to use their own accruals.
Okay.
And they were sent home before April 1st, they had to use their own accruals.
Is that a department or elected office?
It was a.
It was a treasurer's office.
It was, actually then there's two, I'm sorry, there's two. Treasurer and another office.
That person chose to take, uh, no pay.
Correct. And the other person utilized their accruals as much as they had and the rest was a no pay situation, so.
But, uh, there is a difference, uh, because the sheriff told this person to stay home. And those chose to.
No.
Is that correct? Well, treasurer, that person chose to.
I don't believe so.
So, I mean, to the question of who is best qualified to send their people home, I agree with the sheriff. But my question is, if it's, if a pandemic is not an appropriate time to use accrued sick leave, then what is?
Under, Matthew, under most circumstances, none of this would have happened. He would have, uh, came back to work, both of those people. But because of that, we made them stay home. And so I didn't want them, the one wasn't penalized, he was allowed to be administratively. And the other one is, and so I'm just trying to clear it, as again, it's all before the April 1st. And, uh, these circumstances are somewhat unique going forward. We all agreed, at least what I thought at that meeting, was that we would go by what, uh, wage and hour and, uh, Department of Labor came up. These two incidents had occurred before even.
I'm always just thinking about the unintended, unintended consequences to things because, you know, where does this, like, where is the line? If there's no doctor's note, if it's your determination, I understand that, but, you know, that's one type of risk factor. Are elected officials going to look at anyone over a certain age and they have wholesale authority just to use administrative leave in those situations? Or different sort of factors? I mean, you could really, you could really, you know, expand this. I mean, we're not talking about a doctor's note, we're requiring from all the departments and I think the federal legislation requires documentation in order to substantiate different times off. But this case, it, it wasn't necessarily a doctor's recommendation, it was your judgment.
Right, it was, we were going by CDC, what they had, uh, the policy that they had set forth. And under these circumstances, because of the environment we work in, we just didn't want to have that risk factor to, uh, in any way get up in the jail. That's our biggest worry. There'd just be a ton of issues, so, um, yet we're, we're somewhat unique than other places, I know. A, a, and, uh, Pat would, uh, probably say that, uh, in agreement, that, you know, it's 24/7. There's a lot of different circumstances that come into play.
So, I had a short discussion with Melissa Thomas, our HR director, prior to the meeting. Several actually, but admin leave is not an extra budget cost. It is just basically a, it's a spot on the time card, or the time card system to keep track of time and the employee is not using his accruals, okay? That is, uh, I can understand that. I guess my, my thinking here, at least a good portion of it is, uh, as far as the vestal decision here and some of those things. I would think that if it was an appointed director, I would see him as needing to come before the board and say, this is what I feel. But I, but I guess I have to put a little more emphasis on an elected to use his, his or her discretion if for little or no other reason to avoid a lawsuit at times. So, as much as I, uh, and another conversation I had with another board member earlier, uh, one day last week, I think it was, um, my thinking is as long as it's not half of your crew has gone on admin leave because. because somebody's got a sniffle and the third cousin that lives in Memphis has a sore throat, then I get it. You know, there has to be some logical, consistent, linear way to keep this thing rolling without abusing it and.
Taking the two terms of sheriff, we've used it a few times. Far less than five, I'd probably say, four, maybe. So, it isn't, it isn't something that we use. It's a discretion, and these are unique circumstances. And it was used for that instance.
I'm not comfortable making any decisions on this today, not knowing the cases of the other employees. I'm of course concerned about making sure employees are treated equally and fairly. And reading the decision of the jury versus Board of Supervisors, I just don't agree with what you're saying. It's decided because it actually upheld that the Board of Supervisors. implication in that kind of discussion, so. I would prefer to delete and move on. That's my preference, but, or defer till next week, or two weeks.
I'm not, I'm not.
That's my position, so.
Mr. Podol. Truthfully, I'm just the other way. One person used a sick time, the other person didn't have to. To me, that's what I'm looking at, in this one department, one elected official. I've, ever since I've been here, I've always tried to figure out this elected official stuff.
Unique from where you're.
From, from my prior world, it is unique. But I would, my thing is, and I would even make a motion that would give the 68 hours of sick time back to the one. Moving forward from April 1st, we have direction on what we're going to do.
Absolutely.
And this to clear up the mess prior to. I'll make that as a motion, Mr. Chair.
There's still more discussion to be had unless someone wants to second it.
I'll second it.
All right.
Now we can have discussion.
Now we can have discussion. So, I'm troubled by the lack of communication that apparently occurred, where the HR director's not aware of one of these cases that we're talking about. And, and the office coming before the board is bringing it up. I just, in these situations and in others, it would be helpful to advise HR what is going on in regards to a health issue. With all the things that HR has to go through and learn with this legislation and the county's March policy that I sent out, it's, it's really just helpful to have everyone on the same page and not have to call meetings after you've already identified a disagreement, I guess. So, just a little note there that it's, that it would really help the board to know that everyone's on the same page on the facts.
Yeah. I, you know, some of that might be on me because I, Pat and Michelle have done a great job coding all these things. And I believe that, you know, I. So. My opinion that an elected official has that discretion. But, you know what, this is a very unique situation, starting in April 1st. We're not, it's not going to happen anymore. I just want to see this gentleman get his, his hours reimbursed. Thanks.
Personally, again, that's why I don't want to do something for one person when there's two other employees, at least in our system of governance, that aren't getting treated the same way.
Well, I don't think the people had a choice on when they got sick. I think the only thing that's set in stone is April 1st, when the, when the, whatever Department of Labor came through with this, with this directive. So I, at the same time, on, to the sheriff's cautionary note that, and I, and I know people in the medical field that are very convinced that COVID's been around since December, January, and February, when there was no test that would detect it. So I don't, I don't buy into the, I buy into your argument, Mr. Raddig, that, that we should, we should wait another week or two. I don't, I don't like the idea that there's probably been people who have had this and recovered from it, and they, and it was never tested as COVID, so, because they didn't have the test available. So, we can't, we can't put a timeline on, on when people get sick.
And the point of waiting a week or two is to get the facts on the other employees within the county.
I don't think that changes the fact that when they got sick has anything to do with the Department of Labor.
It changes that one person is getting treated one way, and then two others are getting treated a different way. That's what I'm concerned about.
Not that you want to hear this, but my understanding is that if the reimbursement doesn't happen, then the union only has so many days to file a grievance. And so Friday was when his pay, it was shown, Thursday, actually, that there was a discrepancy in his pay. So he only has so many days to file that grievance. We, we just can't leave it in limbo. I would hope with the motion that you would see to it that this party gets reimbursed.
And again, the one thing I've learned, my three years on here, with all the different elected officials, is they don't all treat their people the same either.
No, absolutely.
And as far as I've learned, there's nothing forcing them to. Their elected official, they run their office.
But that's why you have a handbook and policies that treats your employees the same.
That, that every elected official has their own, you don't follow mine.
Well, do you, you don't do the collective bargaining, and you don't do all the agreements.
No, I don't do that.
Exactly.
But I have policy.
Right.
And so it doesn't always coincide with the counties. So as elected official, the autonomy goes to that party. We are co-equals. You don't oversee me, and I don't oversee you, we're co-equals. We answer to the public, who vote every year, every four for one of us.
Since attorney's opinion, or at least correspondence was brought up, may I question our board's resident Joshua Whitman, if you have any thoughts on what's been said?
Well, I.
You are so quiet, we often forget you're there. And then after the meeting, we're like, man, I wish we asked.
I mean, I'm deferring to PJ, to some extent, he's been involved in these discussions. I don't know, I don't know if you've looked specifically at the David Vestal PowerPoint or not. I guess my reading of that is, is consistent with, with Keith's reading in that. So it specifically says in there that the elected official has control over personnel matters. Personnel matters would be like employee discipline. The board can't discipline a member of the Sheriff's Department or any other elected official. But then it goes on to say that if there's a statute that specifically gives the Board of Supervisors control, then, then the board does control that issue. And it cites the, if I go back to here. 331-904 says that the Board of Supervisors fixes compensation for extra help and clerks appointed by the principal officers. And then sick leave and vacation are considered a part of compensation typically. So, I, I think that, that what's in the Vestal opinion would support that the board controls the vacation, sick leave part of it. And like Keith mentioned, I mean, the board does do the, the negotiations with the, with the unions on the, you know, the pay and the various issues. And, and I think that it's probably because of that. But there's always a fine line between, there's a balance there between, yes, the autonomy of the elected official and, and the supervisors. So, did you have anything to add to that?
Again, my only part in this was, when I was brought into this meeting, again, yes, the board, I believe, does have that authority. Just the way Joshua stated it. However, not everything is written the way it should be, or the way it could be. I believe the sheriff was put in a situation where he had to make a call. The only person that theoretically be hurt in this whole situation is that employee, because the sheriff told that employee to go home. And it was from that standpoint that when we look at our responsibility, I believe he was coming from the standpoint, the sheriff, he, was that he was trying to protect the employees who that employee, had he not sent him home, would have been placing those other employees in jeopardy. And from that standpoint, I believe that employee should not be hurt. And the only way that employee cannot be hurt from the sheriff's actions, which he was entitled to do to protect his other employees, was to tell them to go home. He should not be forced to use his accrual time, because that was the sheriff's authority to send him home. I don't know about all those other employees and what they're going through. I don't know what's specifically stated in that policy. I don't know what's in that ruling or that court order. However, the sheriff faced a situation, he made a judgment call, and the only person that could get hurt by forcing him to use his accrual time is that employee.
Sir Doitt, once again, in that, the elected officials have to have, I'm sure every elected official, especially one that is, you're in charge of your own office, whatever, you set your policy. In other words, the board can't punish a deputy by our policy, because we don't control your policy. We couldn't punish a deputy that recklessly did something. It's not our job to piss upon him, that's yours. So I, I guess, like I said, I'm, I'm looking at this as an administrative decision on the, on the sheriff's part in this particular case, and the elected official. I'd rather, I'd rather err on the side of, and I don't see it as an error, I'd rather go with the elected official having the discretion to, to set his policy. Again, like you said, like sheriff said, he's got to answer to the voters every four years, so.
And I don't think it's necessarily the sheriff setting their policy. I think that would be the bad route to take in this instance. Because again, the sheriff, and I believe it's clear, and he needs to understand that, he doesn't control payroll. He doesn't. The sheriff needed to make a call in this situation, this situation. If you require a policy, if he's going to try to set a policy where he can do that anytime he wants to, I would tell the sheriff, he's wrong. He can't, be my opinion. But in this instant, with this employee under these circumstances, he was allowed to make that call that he made. Granted, he should have went to HR. Even before he made that call, if he had that time, because I think he might have had that time. If there was a mistake, that's the only mistake. Again, we shouldn't hurt that employee, because the sheriff made a call that he felt he needed to make so that other employees weren't jeopardized. Simple as that.
I'll just go back to, as far as an employee being hurt. The employee was, was sent home, the employee was still paid, the employee used accrued sick leave. I know that's not the avenue that was desired by the sheriff's office. But they were paid, they were paid their accrued sick leave for a health issue. When it comes down to it, that an administrative decision was made for a health issue. To the request, I think this is a nice thing for a public company, or, excuse me, a private company to do, if they want to just make this call. But we've said over and over again, we're in unprecedented times. And I just draw upon my experience the last few days. You know, I work, I also work in, in healthcare administration. Lots of essential workers are having their hours cut. I've had to write some very difficult memos recently. I oversee, you know, different healthcare facilities that, you know, the tens of millions of dollars of revenue going down greater than 50%. And there's, there's essential workers that are being forced to use vacation time, forced to use unpaid time, forced to use sick leave. And none of this is, feels right. And, and, you know, we are, in a local government, we have a little more insulation in that we can still rely on property taxes and, and budgets that are a year out. But I, I just have a problem with taxpayers paying for the opportunity for one of their peers in the public sector to retain their sick leave, specifically to retain their sick leave during a pandemic, when the sick leave could have been used, when that person is losing their job. The, the private sector is losing their jobs left and right. They're being forced to use every sort of leave that they thought they had, you know, new policies are being written. And I know this is, was a judgment call, but those are judgment calls that people are having to deal with out in the real world. And we answer to the people, yes, and the people all around us are having much worse fate. I think that having to use your accrued sick leave is a blessing when other people in the community are having to lose their income. So that's how I feel about this. But I'm glad that the legislation was written, and from a certain point forward, applies. If we could have, if that could have been done sooner, I'm sure we'd all be just as happy, but it wasn't. And. So with that, is there any other discussion?
I would say unless you want it to fail two to two, you might want it to be pushed back a week.
I have one question. When you said that we control sick time and vacation time, do we control administrative leave for an elected official?
I think the, I think administrative leave would be part of a compensation package. But you already have administrative leave written into the policy. And so you'd have to look at what your policy says as far as, okay, who determines when they put someone on administrative leave? And my assumption is, you know, that they're classifying them that way. So it's, I, I would think that you give a lot of deference to the elected official. You could have a discussion about certain parameters that's put in there. But once you've already said, okay, the elected official has the ability to put administrative leave, put someone on administrative leave, then it puts it more in the ballpark of the elected official determining when.
So where, where do we have a copy of that policy that would tell us?
Administrative leave is longstanding that the sheriffs have used forever, same as the police department. Police department has administrative leave, they put people on administrative leave. This isn't a, an act of bargaining. They don't, there is no union that's going to bargain for administrative leave. They bargain for vacation, they bargain for sick time, comp time, and all the other. Administrative leave is what an administration does to a person that they believe needs to be on administrative leave. That is the discretion of the sheriff.
But do we not oversee personnel decisions like that, or have to approve those?
Sure I can, no, I, I can.
No, us, Board of Supervisors. What's our policy on, does anyone have that?
Somebody's looking right now. But the first person got administrative leave.
Absolutely. Three days.
If they're told to stay three days after they've been sick, why is the person getting eight and a half days?
Eight and a half days because he was still being treated for the issue that he had ongoing.
That wasn't related.
These are, these, I, I believe, in my heart of hearts, they're issues that the sheriff or that elected official has. So what will happen is however you vote, however it decides, if it doesn't go this way, I'm just telling you. I will get served a grievance tomorrow. I will be in agreement with their grievance. They will then bring forth that grievance.
Because it sounds like if the person's actually sick and you're using administrative leave, then that would be an abuse of administrative leave.
No.
Okay. Okay.
It's the board's pleasure. Are we waiting for Melissa?
I, I don't know. If we have a copy of that policy somewhere, it'd be good to know.
So... We put an officer deputy on administrative leave when he was involved in a shooting. Did you think he needed sick time? Or vacation? For holiday or comp time?
I don't know.
That was my discretion. That's the sheriff's discretion to do that. Same is of the sheriff's discretion to decide if somebody's gonna come to work or not. Officer involved in shooting, administrative leave. His gun's taken and he's sent home. He'll come back after the investigation's done. I don't hear anything.
Well, he's not sick.
That's what we're talking about, what you were talking about. I don't have the authority to do it. I do. Put people on paid administrative leave undisciplinarily until the investigation's completed.
But you're, you're bringing up cases that are the definition of why...
That is my discretion. Administrative leave.
But if you're using administrative leave for something that by definition isn't administrative leave...
How, how do you know what that definition? My definition is he shouldn't come back to work because I don't want him infected...
We need to see if there is a policy.
Again, that's not, I don't fall under that.
You do.
I do not. So we'll let that go.
So this is the policy, 4.12 out of the handbook. On a case-by-case basis, the county may place an employee on administrative leave with or without pay for an indefinite period of time during an investigation or other administrative proceeding. That's from the handbook.
It's pretty ambiguous, or other administrative procedures.
Roll call, Mr. Auditor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails two to two. Young and Radek opposed.
I may be willing to look for, or look at that again, knowing more information.
Item nine from Secondary Roads, Mark Nara. For action is to approve the contract with Metal Call Works Incorporated for $86,261.40 for irrigated metal pipe supply for 2020.
Mark Nara with Berry County Engineer. The Board approved the quotations that we had for, I guess there's some stuff, the contracts are in there too, you've got the whole package. The Board approved the quotation from Metal Cauldrons Incorporated, Jefferson City, Missouri, for the supply of our 2020 Cauldrons for use by our maintenance staff. Recommend approval of the contract.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Potabom, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? Thursday, aye.
Aye.
Post and a, passes four zero. That is item ten for action. Receive an award bid for C and R sales for a new weed spray system for county weed commissioners.
Uh, when we, with the annual report in December, one of the items that we discussed was the need to have the computer mapping attached to the weed spray system. One improves where he's been. It gives a clear record of how much he's applied per acre that is treated over the course of the year. Uh, we've, uh, as you can see, that this was on the capital program, or capital improvement projects for this year. Uh, the cost was higher with the, with the mapping software than what was anticipated from the preliminary numbers that we got from the contractors. You can see we had three quotes. The first one includes just a spray system. The GPS control on it monitors the speed and controls the application of the spray as far as record keeping. Second system, $1,500. Attached to that spray. Can equip a low bid, uh, SCS 4400 control console to the board. Price on that was, you got the, had an SCS, added to it. That was an additional $5,000. So roughly makes it a break even to the system that is offered in the lower quote with the GPS mapping system, the Phoenix 200 GPS control console and mapping system, the $41,000 option we have there. The Viper four is the latest and greatest. That was the third system that they bid. They have one of the systems left, that Phoenix 200. Uh, they're holding it until hopefully the board makes a decision and follows the recommendation to purchase this out of our capital projects budget.
I really wanted to ask Jared, what's, you know, what's the best weapon against bind weed? But you're not gonna know that.
Yeah.
So...
Nope, I, I wouldn't, I'm afraid. But he is available by telephone.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post and a, passes four zero. Item B is approval of the weed destruction order resolution for 2020.
Uh, the weed destruction notice will be published upon approval by the Board of Supervisors. The dates are roughly the same as last.
I gotta fight the wild carrot.
That is...
I like the normal, everyday carrot.
No, it, it doesn't have an edible yet.
I'll move approval.
Second, motion by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion on the plight of the poison hemlock or others. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post and a, passes four zero.
Thank you very much. They can get that spray system installed for us before the end of the fiscal, so expenditure will appear.
Thank you. Item 11 from the Board of Supervisors, supervisor Potabom, is for action, approval of resolution of the Woodbury County General Contract Quality Assurance Post-Bid Questionnaire Policy. One question. I don't see a resolution attached, so are you referring to an actual change in the, okay, this is a resolution, but is it to change the policy?
No, that's with the questionnaire. Those post bids. This the same one we did last week. The reason I didn't have this put on the consent agenda, we did a little digging afterwards when I talked to Kenny. And he said that we did give that questionnaire as part of our policy to all people that did. Let the law, that was passed in 2016. Apparently what happened then, and I called down to the Legislative Services Bureau and had a chat with one of the people in their office, who remembered it. And apparently when this was passed by this board in 2016, similar to now, it was being asked for numerous city councils and Board of Supervisors to do it. And a lot of them did. And shortly thereafter, lobbyists for the contractors hit up the legislators and says, hey, when we fill that out, we're given proprietary information on a bidding process. If we don't get the bid, we've already given out our proprietary information. And the legislature apparently said, yeah, and truthfully, I do too, I agree with that. So they changed the code to say that it can only be given to the lowest bidder that has been approved. So it has to be post bids instead of pre-bid. So like, we have a project and there's five bidders, they don't all have to fill out that questionnaire. We go through our normal bidding process, award the bid based on all that. The winning bidder would then be required to fill out the questionnaire. And that's really the only change right now, is that we're making a post bid rather than with the original bids. Or post award, I'm sorry. Post award, they, you just give it to the one you're giving the award to after they do the bidding. And that's the change in this, and I just wanted to make sure we are in compliance with what the new code is. So we don't put ourselves out there that we're asking people bidding to give us what could be proprietary information out of bidding process.
So it's basically asked for without that really in mind?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because when, when we did it, when the law, when this board passed it in 2016, prior to some of us joining this board, that was fine. But then they changed the code to say that it can only be given out post, and not given after the order. And that truthfully makes sense. So what this does, this just puts us in compliance so that it's gonna go through and then be going down the process. As of right now, the questionnaire and the policy, we may want to at some other time bring forward the questionnaire because there's some discrepancies in what should be in it, what shouldn't, does it include subcontractors? But all that's fine as long as we get this to get us in compliance.
No issues here, or any thoughts from anybody?
I'll move it. Second.
Motion by Radek, second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post and a, passes four zero. Thank you. And then Melissa, will, will you look into if there needs to be any changes? Or, Mr. Potabom, can you work with the...
Yeah, well, I, because Kenny's gonna bring it forward too.
Okay.
And I know Ernie Colt is interested because he's got the one that was presented to Polk County in Des Moines. And where ours, you know, we had one that had eight, one that had 10, one had 11 questions. Apparently the ones they just passed have 25. So we'll do some digging and looking at it and see to bring that forward.
Anything more intense, kind of?
Well, the thing is, ours didn't include anything for the subs because they figured that would be done later. And, and I haven't seen, I haven't read the one that has 25, so...
All right. Item 12 for action again is states due to COVID-19, the Board will be discussing various issues and may take appropriate steps for the protection and safety of both the community and county employees. Are there any updates, Melissa?
Melissa Thomas, Resources Director. I do have an addendum to our current family medical leave policy. This does include the new Family First Coronavirus Response Act that is from April 1st until December 31st of this year. We are requiring the certification of Dr. Joe or the closure of this whole thing that we, there are two things that we are not following or we plan to. There is an exemption to this Department of Labor Act, and that is with emergency personnel. We do not have to provide this for our various departments. Do not intend, or we are going to provide this leave for those. Also, this act covers 80 hours of leave. There's personnel that do not, and then it is... Addendum? Signature? And copy's? I'm gonna do that right.
You have extras?
Sure.
Why don't you give it, give it to us? And I'll receive it for the, uh, record. Who'd receive it for the record?
Second.
Second by Potabom. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post and a, passes four zero. And I'll move to adopt this. I understand Joshua's credit. And I've reviewed it before the meeting as well, it's just formalizing the law for... Is there a second?
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Any discussion or questions?
You said emergency personnel aren't included in this?
Not in the formal Department of Labor Act.
Okay.
It can be excluded, but we are honoring this for our all personnel.
So we're going...
I'm just, personally, you would know why it's just protection, that they wouldn't be included in the law.
Well, I think there might be a service task for any person on the field to figure out. So that's why we...
I was thinking, I was thinking of more of getting in contact with the coronavirus.
Well, for, for childcare, for example, it's up to 10 weeks, so that could be, you know, quite a burden. People need that leave.
Yes.
Yeah, December 31.
12:31. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other items?
I've had some people irritated, just plain mad that we're taking temperatures at the courthouse, but no other building. I guess the sheriff's office is doing their own with the jail nurse, or the nursing staff over there, medical staff. But some people are wondering why the city, county, and state offices for the courthouse are being temperature tested, but, but not other buildings like Secondary Roads, Veterans Commission Office, and... Why just the courthouse? So I don't have a good answer.
Bet they wouldn't complain if it's, okay, we'll put security into those buildings you'll have to go through too.
You don't have any questions for the sheriff who's not here anymore? Going as well as it could under the circumstances, like everything else. Anyone else on COVID-19? All right. Item 13 is reports on committee meetings, anyone?
I had a certs meeting and a de-cap meeting and another workforce meeting all over Zoom. Mostly just dealing with different COVID-related issues. The de-cap meeting had some good news, another county couldn't use all their funding, and they transferred that to our county, so we're gonna get a little extra money over here for a couple of our programs that could use it. And then on workforce developments, there's been a big development where we're region 12 currently. There was an attempted to, they attempted to force consolidate us into 24 counties out of North West Iowa. They challenged that, they won. So we went back to the fall region and in getting in compliance with all the federal laws that, you know, workforce development regions had not been in compliance with. We found that the administrative cost to stay, you know, a five or six county region is just not feasible. You can't hire and do all the things you need to do for 30 grand. So we're gonna combine most likely with, I wanna say region, it's either eight or nine to the east of us, which is Carroll County, and region 13, which is all the way to the southern edge of the state. And I guess more to come because we all have to vote as regions unanimously to combine. So if one county votes no, then we don't do it. So... So I'll keep you posted.
I had a WCICC meeting. I do Microsoft Teams. No surprise that the IT meeting was, worked well with video conferencing. That Microsoft Teams capabilities are running out to the departments to facilitate those sort of things. And that department's running very smoothly, I have to say. Any other reports on committee meetings? Item 14, citizen concerns. Is there anyone on the line, Andy?
No one on the line.
No one on the line. All right. I know there's probably at least three watching. Couple.
We have a good crowd tonight. We're at 15 right now, but we're up to 20 over there.
Okay. Can't imagine why. Otherwise, let's all wave to Brett Hayworth. And let's all wave to Woody Gottberg. Those are the only two I know that are watching.
Security.
Security, wave to security. I'm the only one waving.
I want to mention is that they should be beside them.
Bottle of water.
What?
Well, I had it on this nylon part and it's, I think it was generally like two, 1.8 gigavolt or whatever it was. That was a Raddick joke, never mind. Wasn't very funny, sorry.
All righty. Any board concerns? Our turn.